I'll try this.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming. I have started the recording. Welcome to the November 21st Business Meeting of the Borough Council. Mr. Metrick, could you call the roll please?
Mr. Voiceboard, here.
Mr. Weybruck, here.
Mr. Cilio.
Pardon.
Ms. Richmond.
Here.
Ms. Corner.
Here.
Mr. Stavramopit.
Present.
Mr. Muter.
Present.
Mayor Grady.
Present.
And Tom Walker.
Present.
It's nice to see a full house. Councilor Cilio, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. One of my comments this evening, just that we have a lot of business on the table. So, I would encourage all of us to keep that in mind as we work our way through this evening. For everybody is important realizing the moment to delegate back down to a committee is important. But we do have some business items that need to be decided tonight. There are things that we need to walk away with today so that we can get into 2017 and have our trash picked up and be able to pay our points. So, Mr. Mayor, you got your report?
Just a couple of comments and thank you. We're on the holiday season and I'd like to remind everyone that this Tuesday and Wednesday are very busy nights in the borough. If you go out and celebrate and have a great time, but just walk home. We're trying to keep people off the roadways. The police will be out, they'll be on patrol. But we have a wonderful town where you can walk up to, so don't get behind the car and just have a great holiday.
Thank you. Mr. Metrick, would you like to present the preliminary 2017 budget?
I would, thank you. Pause for a second, let me get the... I'm going to put you in the dark over here. All right, here we are. I'm going to pause for a second and I want to say this... To say this has been a groundbreaking year for me personally and for the borough would be an understatement. We've really worked very hard to investigate all of the borough's business processes trying to take over and blaze a new trail for the way the borough does business. And I want to publicly thank council for their support of me personally, of Matt West, of Leslie Marshall in the office, and everything you've done this year to help make this a successful year for us in the office as well. So, one of the positive outcomes of this is this borough budget. And what I hope it is for everyone is a clearer picture of where your tax dollars come from, where they're going, and then going forward how we're going to use this tool to continue to improve how we budget for administration. This presentation is really geared towards the public here. We all want to know where our tax dollars go. And just for perspective's sake, I just want to make the point that when you get your tax bill at the end of the year, your total mileage rate is about 39.63. That's your mileage rate if you live in the borough of Narborough. And nearly 70% of that goes to the lower-end school district. The county tax is... was last year 8.7%. I saw in the newspaper it was scheduled to go up 10%. And the local tax rate as of last year was 8.775. 22% of your tax dollars go to support your local government. So, what's a mileage rate? You take the assessed value of your property, you divide it by 100, you times it by the tax rate, by 1,000. Pardon? Did I say 100?
Yeah.
I try to... you know, I try to take one by Aaron. There's another zero on our revenue, but it's too quick for me. The assessed value of property, I put up there the median assessed value for a piece of property in the borough of Narborough is $174,000. You can't go out and really buy too many homes in Narborough for 174. What this is, is a valuation of what your home was probably worth the last time the county did a countywide assessment. I think that year was 1998 or 1999, I know. And the median, I always use median when I talk about measures of wealth, because in the United States of America, measures of wealth are positively skewed whenever we talk about income or how much things are worth. Average is always going to be way higher than the median. The median is the one that falls in the middle. If you line up 100, low to high, median is number 50 and 51 in the middle. So, the median assessed value in the borough of Narborough is $174,000. Divide it by 1,000, times it by the mileage rate, you get your annual tax bill which is about $1,528. Your average tax bill in the borough of Narborough is $1,528, about $127 a month. So, what's a budget? Why do we even bother with this thing? For me, a budget is really the most important planning tool that your local government creates on an annual basis. It helps us plan out our finances. It's a statement of the priorities of council, what council thinks is important programmatically and in its capital program. And then it gives direction for the entire administrative team and all the department of government as to what we should be doing during the year. So, budgets are really, a really fundamentally important document. They need to be understood by everyone at the table. They need to be understood by the public. We need to know where our dollars are going and how they're being spent. So, hopefully, we will get there. Let's look at the revenue side of our budget to begin with. And I guess we all remember Pac-Man, right? I don't see anybody under the age of 25 in the room. So, the biggest part of the borough budget is our tax base. 72% of our tax dollars come from property tax. The other big chunks are, we get 15% from service fees. What's a service fee? Well, that's the fees we charge people to get building permits, for instance. So, if you've never come into the borough office to do any of that elective kind of work, you're never going to pay any of those service fees. And those service fees, in aggregate, depending on whatever it is you happen to be coming in to pay for, I see some developers here that have paid us some service fees. Those costs are meant to balance out. The fees we charge are meant to balance out the costs the borough incurs to do those programs. We receive a certain amount of income from our rental property at 201 Sabine Avenue. We get a fair amount of grants as well into the borough. I hope that as we go forward, we will continue to get grants, we will continue to increase our grant running capacity, and we can get that blue piece of the pie a little bit bigger. But the point I want to make here is the bulk of our dollars come from your property tax bill. And what are we taxing? We're taxing the value of all properties in the borough. And what do you notice about this bar graph? Come on, you can all speak up?
Very loud.
Oh, it's very loud. So, we added up all the aggregate value of assessed value of property in Narborough. It's about $311 million right now. Hasn't changed much in the last 10 years. Now, here's a little trick of chart making. You can focus in and change the Y-axis a little bit and say, oh, look at this, it's really zooming up. But it's not really zooming up if you look at it at a bigger scale. But if you zoom in on a microscopic level, yes, there's been an increase lately. And what is that probably a result of? Well, the hangover of the Great Recession wore off and people started having... unemployment went down, people got financing was easier to find. So, we're seeing additions and new construction in the borough pick up again at the pace that we were accustomed to before the recession in '08. Bottom line, Narborough's tax base grows at roughly 0.3% per year. About what your checking account earns in interest. Not a whole lot. So, what do we spend our money on? I want to talk about the blue, pink and purple pie pieces first. I'm a little colorblind, so if I say the wrong color, just nod and humor me like I'm looking at the right thing. The sewer and solid waste fees are kind of zero-sum game taxes. Whatever it costs us, me and the borough, to pick up the trash is what we charge the users for that service. Whatever it costs for sewer service, that's basically baked in. That's not going to change too much. Where we have more discretion is on the government pieces of the pie. So, 85 cents of the dollar that the borough spends goes towards government. So, let's talk about what that means. What is government? Well, here it is in the departmental categories. One of the things we tried to do with this budget is to break things up in individual departments. We could look back at our process five, 10 years down the line. Costs for police have done this over this amount of time. Costs for administration have done this over the amount of time. So, police is a third of our government expenditures. Administration accounts for roughly a quarter. And public works accounts for roughly 1/8th, 12.5%. The others are smaller pieces of the pie. We'll get into more of this in detail in the budget. And if you open up the document and view it, you'll be able to look up and see fire company. What are those nine items that are being spent for fire, for the fire company? Same information shown to you in a bar graph to help you visualize what I was just talking about there. So, some of the highlights of the budget process that we went through this year that will be detailed in a written narrative that you'll be able to download from the borough website tomorrow, is that in our police department, we are hiring one full-time patrol officer for a total of six sworn officers. We currently have five, four patrol officers and a sergeant. Next year, we will have five patrol officers and a sergeant. That's a big deal. Administration, we are keeping the same three full-time staff on board. However, we're bringing in some help. We're bringing in a capital planning consultant to help council and the public develop a capital plan, cost that out, and then help us understand how much money we need to borrow going forward to repair the things that we deferred maintenance on. Human resource consultant mainly to help me with organizational policies, benefits policies, everything from soup to nuts in terms of how to properly manage the workforce. Financial advisor, I want to recognize Kathy Seiler who's in the room tonight, who was our financial advisor and I hope will still be into next year, has helped me immensely develop this budget and I thank her for her support. So, having that extra eyes and ears in the room is very helpful to me. You may have met, if you came to previous meetings in the summer, you may have met Matt Zapson and Lauren Foltz. They were GIS interns for the borough. And so, there is some money in this year's budget to hire part-time administrative assistants. We're not sure exactly yet what that position will entail. Matt and I are working on some job descriptions and some ideas, but there is money in the budget to help pay for that. We have a parking study which has its straddling two budget years. We will have spent about half of the budget of dollars this year. We'll get built monthly and next year we'll spend the other half of those dollars. I want to highlight that we are still going through this process and will be, next year, we will be in 2018, 2019, going through this comprehensive overhaul of the way we do business. It's just going to take that much time for us to continue to innovate, continue to create more efficiencies downstairs in the borough office, and I hope that we'll come to see some of those improvements going forward. Some other highlights with capital programming, there is a community development block grant that the borough got for $77,000 to pay for nine intersection retrofits to put in A-88 and also solve some of the stormwater problem inlets in the borough. That's in the budget. We also have final design and engineering to do with the North Narborough Avenue Bridge. That is a project that the borough gets reimbursed 95 cents on the dollar for. So, we still have about $100,000 of design and engineering to go before that goes out to constructions. That will, in a sense, cost the borough $5,000 out of pocket once we've reimbursed, got our reimbursement from Penn dial. There's a small amount of money in the budget for improvements to 100 Conway Avenue, mostly in the room right here that we're all in. Like you see, some paint on the walls, some new carpets, maybe a new AV system where you don't have to shut the light in Tom's space. And we're also going to convert this into a space where we can also do some administration of government. I do a lot of my work up here at the council table now on my laptop. So, we're going to look at some of those improvements. And if you've ever had the pleasure of using some of the bathrooms on this floor, we will be looking at those next year and that's what those dollars are for. Council, in its review of the budget, has brainstormed an additional $382,000 of priority capital improvements. We haven't vetted, meaning we haven't gone and done the proper cost estimates as to what those, what this project would really cost. But those will be incorporated into a capital plan in 2017. There's some dollars in the form of a transfer to our capital fund to help pay for that through financing, through borrowing. Some of these challenges, you know, it's not all... There's challenges. I'm going to be honest with you. One of them was when I showed you earlier that the tax base is pretty flat. The police pension costs have escalated rather quickly. In 2013, the mileage rate for pension was .289. That was only four years ago. Now, it's going to be probably somewhere around 1.2. So, it's almost... I'm going to do the math there. It's almost gone up 4X in four years. We had the pension consultant actuary, it's on in here, just before this meeting. And fortunately, there's a plateau coming up, but we walked up a very steep hill to get here. We have a lot of deferred maintenance to take care of with our buildings, parks and facilities. I'm happy to say that our roof now is watertight. I know you guys like that because the fire company used to get rain on in their meetings inside when it rained. But that's an example of a $180,000 project that we took care of this year. We have a lot of projects like that that we have to take care of in the borough and that's part of what the capital plan is going to help discover for us. There's employee raises. Some of them are contractual and some of them have your employees at the borough or non-contract employees. And we like to give our employees raises. So, those are built into the budget process. And all that is difficult because the tax base isn't really going up to keep par with some of these costs, cost pressures. So, as I finished this preliminary budget, we had a gap of $139,000 between expenditures and revenue if we were to keep the mileage rate existing at 8.775. So, in order to close that gap, we increased the proposed mileage rate to 9.223. That's a 5.1% increase. And going back to the chart I showed you before with our median, you know, I don't want to say average, the median assessed property in Narborough. Times the new tax rate with our annual tax bill would be $1,606. Increase of about $6 a month, up to $133 a month. 5% increase. So, in conclusion, just commenting a little more on the process here, the budget itself will be available on the borough's website under financial information and including a narrative explaining some of the things I went over in this meeting. Council will meet again at the caucus meeting December 4th.
The 4th is a Sunday.
It is a Sunday. That's when Dickens is. I must have had Dickens on my...
Immediately following the Dickens Fest.
What's that?
Immediately following the Dickens Fest.
Yeah. Maybe we can use like $18.95 money. So, I got the date wrong there. So, that'll be Wednesday, the 7th at 7:30. There's a Finance Administration Committee meeting on the 19th at 6:30 PM. And the December Business Meeting is the last officially advertised meeting of the Borough Council. I expect council to, at that meeting, pass the tax ordinances, the enabling ordinances that put the budget into effect. So, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you and congratulate you for a tremendous amount of work in, a tremendous amount of work in reshaping all of the accounts in the borough and categorizing them, splitting them, and doing it not only in this year but also projecting it forward, which will really give us a sense of what things actually cost. And it's been very helpful to the public but very helpful to the council members. So, thank you again. Now is our opportunity for public comment. As caucus meetings, we take public comment after discussion and business meetings before. So, this is an opportunity for members of the public to say whatever they like.
What are the rules?
The rules, three minutes. We have a fairly full crowd here. I don't know how many of you are speaking. And you state your name and address when you stand up to speak.
Borough residents first and outside of the borough first?
Yes, we will do that. Borough residents first and then I'll do a pass of non-borough residents. Sure.
Thanks.
I'll give you that.
Thanks.
Let's start in the rear corner. We'll start somewhere. Sir, do you have something to say? All right, moving to the left, Mr. Nixon.
Biden.
Mr. Stevenson, Jay. No, okay, coming up, Mr. Duffy will get to you. Mr. Henderson. Mr. Asay. Coming down, okay, there we go. You're up.
Thank you. I'm George Mooseburner, 114 Conway. That was a great presentation. What is... I haven't seen the budget, so it's going to be posted soon.
Tomorrow.
How long have all of you seen the budget?
We saw a preliminary version of this at the last council meeting.
Okay.
And the idea tonight, because I know you see it on the... as an action item here, is to put it on the table so we can have a discussion as part of rules of order. I don't anticipate we will vote on it. I expect we'll discuss it and then table it to discuss further another time.
So, residents will have a chance to actually see it and then maybe comment some more on it. And I guess what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see how we did this year against last year's budget. Because the only thing I had to look at was last year's budget. And for example, the roof was not in last year's budget. There are a number of other things that weren't in last year's budget. And the budget is, as Sean you said, how you plan the next year and further years out. So, that was sort of disappointing to see these major expenditures. It wasn't even last December's budget. And I'd like to see how we did numbers-wise, and that might be in what goes online, how we're doing this year versus what we budgeted.
So, I'll speak to that for a moment and then I'll listen. One of the things that would make that more difficult is that we've changed the entire structure of the budget by reclassifying accounts, splitting accounts. And it's not done in a way that would easily allow us to kind of unroll it to compare where we are today with, say, where we were this time last year or something like that. Or compare it to the current budget. That said, you have some capital projects that have spending. They had notes taken out against them, so they don't necessarily directly impact the borrowed funds. The debt obligation obviously does. That's something that is pushed forward into future years that you can see on this coming budget, as long as you want to go into some more detail about being able to compare previous with current.
I think the spirit of your comment really is, I agree with. And I think with the new budget and the new accounting system and the new charts of accounts that are behind it, all of the reporting, evaluation and future budgets are going to fall into a more rational way to observe how dollars are being spent. And I agree with everything you said. I think I definitely am working towards those goals.
Okay. Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
I mean, one of the disappointments in Narborough was the closing of Mates recently.
Right.
And Mates, I'm sure, was a big taxpayer, so that's a hole in your budget. But do we think that maybe that us taxing gross sales of retail establishments impacts that? I mean, I'm sure no one feels sorry for Rite Aid for paying a tax, right? And I don't know why Mates left, but that's sort of going into the thinking of retail establishments in Narborough. Has anyone thought about whether the business privilege tax and how it's applied needs rethinking? Now, this is new for everyone.
I don't think that that's something that we've had any discussions on this year. Councilor Cilio?
It's actually on our... Now that we've got... By the way, I also, as Chair of Finance Administration, completely agree with your comments about like trying to look at last year's budget and understand what it was for where. That was actually a very big driver of the entire project, to redo our own charity accounts, to make sure we had a capital budget separate from an operating budget. Things that are much more understandable this year than it has been in the past as to what we're budgeting for. It hurts us on comparability.
Yes.
I doubt it.
Okay.
Do it sometime. But getting through that project, one of the things I wanted to focus on next year was, you know, our process for collecting business privilege tax, making sure those rules are up to date. It's a minor kind of thing for the committee to focus on as part of 2017. Just for context, you know, most of our property taxes are residential, real estate, some commercial real estate, military. Business privilege taxes in the budget this year for about $185,000 relative to the overall three and a half. It's not a very big contributor to the overall budget. It's a 1% revenue or a half.
One and a half.
Bills, yeah. But it's not a big lever and it's not a big part of the budget.
Well, I just hope it's not like affecting the retailers. I have no idea sort of...
I don't know that I could speak to whether like that really had a material impact on any specific business.
Right.
I can tell you that that is not something that I have heard from the business community. But I'll tell you what I have heard, just for having a discussion. For certain types of office-based businesses, companies like brokers, where they have a lot of dollars flowing through their business but a very low margin, that sort of tactic really disincents someone like that from moving into the borough because they're really not taxed on what they're doing. They're being taxed on the money that's flowing through. That's the only... From the business community, those are businesses I would say, and I chose not to put my office in their town. Any other members?
George Adtewa, 111 Price. Sean, your presentation was great and I'm just wondering if there's a way that that whole thing can be available online when the budget's put up there?
Yeah, we'll put it on the plans, presentations and reports section of the website tomorrow.
Okay, great. And then how will the public know that it's there? Is there a way that that work can go out to the public? Because if I weren't here, I wouldn't know to look for it.
I bet the civic association could send that.
We can talk about that.
You can go to the borough website and it has a search function on the homepage and that would be a way to locate any document that the borough, on the borough webpage, budget, and it would come up.
Right, that's great, but I just don't think most people have a fraction of the population here and most people aren't even going to know that there was such a presentation. It was really worthwhile, so we'll talk about doing that. And since the issue of business taxes in all came up, I know there's a history in the borough of businesses that just don't pay tax and get away with that because nobody ever asked them. And I know that that goes back years when I was, you know, involved very long with Business Association. I brought that question up about taxes and everybody in the room just said, shh, don't even bring it up because there, lots of us aren't paying taxes and we don't want to talk about this. And then there are at-home businesses that don't pay taxes. So, I wonder what kind of inventory they're finning, what are all our businesses and who's paying and who isn't, and how do we find at-home, you know, home-based...
It's hearing that, not just from you, but I heard that a couple of times. That's why that will put that agenda item on our 2017. We wanted to get through the big board first, but that's something we just want to make sure we understand, how are we maintaining those rules, what the process for collection is, just to make sure...
They don't pay directly to us, there's a service?
There is an outside service that does that collection on the borough's behalf.
Right.
How are they updating their records? How are we ensuring that we're keeping them up to date? We just, you know, it needs a process.
Yes.
For that reason.
How does it go? There's, I'm trying to remember, but you pay like a one small fee and then you pay... What is the percentage of your income per business that you pay?
It's one and a half. So, make our $1,000, they should pay a hundred and fifty.
And then some other little fee, right?
$10 a year.
Right, okay. All right, so this...
And other odd... And other odd fees, like if you have a four hundred or two bucks, you pay a dollar fee.
Oh, so that's a big revenue source.
Some odd earnings fees that may or may not be collecting.
Oh, and then I, just because I've missed meetings, so I'm interested in hearing whether somewhere along the way tonight there will be talk about proposed spending to do a little park thing on the gas station property versus things that could be done with Station Circle? Will that be coming up tonight?
That will be discussed as part of our capital plan. I don't know that we planned to get into the details of the capital plan tonight. I'm not in detail tonight. We, in the committees, we went through lists of, basically threw on the table in the last round of committee meetings, all of the capital projects that had been brought up to the various committees. Economic Development had a few, Property had a lot, Public Works had a lot, others not as much. And in the committee meetings went through, et cetera, which of these things do we think we feasibly do in 2017 and are high priority? We had a few repair-like items in the budget already, 201 Sabine is its own kind of business-related activity off the budget, and the rest of them are what Sean totaled up to that.
Three eighty-nine?
Yeah, three eighty.
Three eighty-two.
It's three eighty-two, but it's rough enough to say, are we putting, we wanted to make sure we're putting away enough capital to fund stuff that had been identified by the committees as near-term opportunities. Which ones of those specifically get done in 2017 is going to be a matter of, now that we're, as part of this process, putting away enough capital to at least do them.
And for those of us who were at that meeting, the list has changed again, so those of us who were at the meeting actually don't even have the current list of what was moved and what had already been appropriated, so we are updating that, and we're going to get the latest information as soon as humanly possible.
Yeah.
Just specifically, yeah, just specifically about the park thing, there's a lot of public interest in what's going to happen there, so I just wanted to find out, like, when will the public have an opportunity to have input about where money is spent on a little park thing down there?
In 2017, I'd say, and especially in the Economic Development Committee, which I think has that park as part of their agenda, and, you know, figure out whether it's capital or whether it's operating.
And where the money will be spent, like which thing will be, great. Thank you.
Now, Alexander Tang, one of his team works. I'd like to know a little bit of preliminary information about parking study, if you can do that tonight, I'm not sure, but how were the people who were interviewed selected to be interviewed, and how much input are the rest of us going to have?
I'll let Mr. Metric answer that. The stakeholder list was developed by committee and council. We couldn't, we had to keep the list to, I think, with nine different interviewees, and we had a couple people that we paired up into one time slot. There's a bunch of different ways to get involved. You can come to the public open house on Tuesday, the 29th, between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. in the auditorium. You don't have to stay for four hours, you can come for as little or as long as you'd like and see what data has been collected so far. The parking study consultants from McMahon, the ones who are located locally, have been out already collecting the data and information, so they'll have some results to share at the meeting. The consultant manager, who is bringing his team down from Boston, will be here to talk about what a parking study is, it is, and what we hope to get out of it. This is a fact-finding mission, there is no conclusions to be made right now, and they want to talk to as many people as possible. Members of the public can also fill out a survey. If you are not on our Norbert Flash or you don't use Facebook, we have a link from our borough website on a parking, parking study page, you can search from our website for parking study, and you would find that link to take that survey. And there will be more opportunities to interact with the consultant team on it, and since it's a study that sort of has its feet in public safety and public works, because it deals with streets and, but it deals with enforcement, those two committees will be referencing the parking study in their work as well, so there's a lot of different ways to engage.
Down second row, coming up this side. Okay, that would conclude public comment from citizens. And are you guys residents of the borough?
No, not really.
Okay, so now I'm going to do, now I'm going to swing back around. Anyone in the rear row, not a borough resident, that would like to make a comment? Yes, sir?
Not a comment, just can you get to the Windsor Street Green Project? If you have any questions, I'm available with Construction Master Services, which was a little bit of the project.
Okay, and your name, sir?
Joshua Duck.
Thank you. Okay. Sir?
Mr. President, Sam Orvist, Director of Sales with Mascaro, and myself and Al DiGanero, our Deputy Counsel, is with me tonight to discuss the trash issues, and I would ask before any motion is made, if we'd be allowed to speak regarding our bid.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Duffy? No. Okay, anyone else who is not a resident? And that will close public comment, thank you. Moving on to number seven, action items. I will accept a motion from Finance Administration regarding the minutes.
I move to adopt the minutes of the October 5th and October 17th meeting of Norbert Borough Council.
Okay, on the table, any discussion? None? All in favor of adopting the minutes of the October 5th and October 17th meeting of Borough Council? Say aye.
Aye.
If it's unanimous, ladies. Next, 7D.
On behalf of Finance Administration Committee, I move that Borough Council approve the October 2016 schedule of bills and authorize the treasury tuition checks and bail bills.
Second?
A second?
Discussion of the bill.
Did you have a question or are you just looking for questions?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, unanimous.
Thank you.
Seven C. Let's, I think that, Mr. Walco, is this, should be a motion to advertise the preliminary budget?
Right, and then we can have a separate motion for a lot of the papers on the table and discuss what we're currently. But it needs to be advertised, which is, you need to be able to advertise in 10 days. Again, this would be a motion to adopt the preliminary budget for advertising, so it's one and the same. Once it's proposed, it would be advertised.
Okay, and that is the next of the motion, or is it?
Okay, not the summary I have here.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just not taking notes on the form. I move that Borough Council adopt the preliminary 2017 borough budget and to authorize the borough manager to advertise the preliminary 2017 borough budget as being available for inspection by the public prior to action by council. A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye, discussion, just for public clarity.
Sure.
So, so, by the way, a process, since there was a question about.
Yeah.
Sean and the office and our financial advisor worked through the summer, really, to recast the entire borough chart accounts and do work on every line item and figure out what a good estimate of spending in each, in each one would be, based on the spending in accounts that mapped to that new account structure. So, it was never perfect, but they got pretty close. About a month ago, Sean had prepared an internal budget that was reviewed by council, beat it up a few times, committee meetings and in, in council meetings, just with feedback, tried to include some capital items in it, et cetera. So, what you're seeing now is, it's not the first, first draft, it's been through some preliminary, you know, workover by the folks on council, but it's not the final one either. So, it's going to go up on the website tomorrow. I encourage everybody to read it, spread the word, if you could help us, let everybody know that it's out there. And council and the office, we appreciate your feedback on what you see. That's been a very helpful source of feedback and changes in the past. Hopefully, we're working from a cleaner start this year, but really appreciate as many sets of eyes on it as we can get. We have until about a month from now to really take comments, reflect on changes, and make any adjustments that we can make. And we're looking to adopt the final version of the budget at the December business year, so.
Nineteen.
But we'd like, you know, if you could comment in in the next couple of weeks, that would be helpful, because that gives, it gives us time to react and make changes maybe. So, I would expect things to move a little bit from where they are here, as they have in the past, although I think we're, we're starting with a starting point that's pretty realistic, as a base of a baseline, absent any big policy changes around things to do with, you know, maybe different capital budget, the, you know, maybe decisions between council and the public on whether to, you know, fund police pension or post-retirement health benefits at a level above the minimum annual contribution or actual that year's spend. So, there could be, you know, discussions with the public, policy-driven changes that might move things significantly, or there could be comments that get reflected based on folks, folks reading what they see. So, I'd appreciate as much, as much public attention on it as we can, and feedback from council as well, and mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other councils that would like to make a comment?
Just to get, I mentioned, specify the, get the list of the, of the budget, because right now we're going on that blind, it's only, of course, it's not, we're not passing this budget, but.
All in favor then of advertising and adopting the preliminary 2017 borough budget?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventeen, zoning counselor.
Yeah, on behalf of the Building Zoning Committee, I move that the Borough Council adopt attached resolution 2016-32 approving the preliminary subdivision and land development plan for 424 Conway, 31 Price Avenue. So, what we're going to propose to do is just say a few words about this resolution, and then ask Mr. Metric or Mr. Walco if they would like to add anything. This parcel of land is, is at the end of the cul-de-sac at Price Avenue, if you're headed west along Price Avenue. After you pass Conway, you come to the top of Norbert Park, and above Norbert Park, there's a sloped parcel of land that currently has two buildings on it, old, old buildings, I think they're multifamily buildings. And over the past while, I could say it's been more than a year, the land, the properties changed hands, they currently belong to Vineyard Holdings Company, and they have been developing plans to basically tear down the buildings that are there and create nine new dwellings, They, they applied for this development approval before we had enacted the Form Base Code, so this is being done under the old, the old zoning ordinance, and this is a preliminary, it's a preliminary resolution to be adopted, accepted. And it might be useful to read from some of the planning commission's notes from their approval and their recommendation that we approve this. They basically have said that they've been working with this particular developer for a while. They note that the application was filed before the Form Base Code, however, they were still able to, to help the applicant, the developer, make significant studies of the access, the roadways, the way you get on and off the site in two different directions, both from the base of Price Avenue and from, and from a smaller driveway on Conway Avenue, what the flow of traffic would be like. And then major consideration was given to how the stormwater would be managed. That was a concern of the people who lived below, because there's a significant amount of runoff that comes across that site. And it's their belief that the stormwater inlets that would be designed by the developer and approved by the borough engineer will provide, I'll read this for you exactly. They say the stormwater management remains a major concern of the neighboring residents, and review of mitigation measures constitutes a large part of the discussion. It was hamply demonstrated, the planning commission says, that post-development runoff would be dramatically less than what occurs today. Also, it was concluded that careful maintenance of the stormwater management system will be crucial to its long-term performance. The planning commission recommends that council require adequate provisions be included in the homeowners association documents to ensure regular inspection and professional maintenance of system components, including structures and plantings in perpetuity. So, this is something we've done in the past with developers, when you offer a condition of approval, it would be that our solicitor would review that any kind of homeowner's documents that would happen with the sale of the, of the properties. So, I have nothing further to say. If you want to add anything, Mr. Metric or Mr. Walco?
I was going to ask to see a borough of our engineering.
Oh, oh, are you Mr. Young?
No, I'm Andrew Bocca, I'm with Benoni, I'm a borough engineer.
Oh, glad you're, glad you're here, yeah.
I don't think that I have anything to add, I think you did a great summary there, but yeah, we, we looked at the plan that was submitted by the developer. The stormwater rate of runoff is reduced by almost a half in the largest storms, or the less frequent storms, and almost by two-thirds in some of the smaller, more frequent storms. So, the rate of runoff is reduced, and also the amount of the volume of runoff, which is being experienced on the site, is also captured in inlets and then directed into underground stormwater management systems that infiltrate into the ground. And the volume that those are, the infiltration volume provided was approximately like 46,000 gallons of stormwater runoff, you know, in a large storm would be infiltrated into the ground for this project. So, anything that overflows the basins or bypasses basins would then be collected to inlets and directed to the existing stormwater system in Price Avenue.
Mr. Walco? Just a comment, I don't think it would be a concern, as you said, to work with the developer, through the homeowners association, I believe, to work with them in order to put the proper language within those declarations or any covenants regarding stormwater. Usually it's in there as well. And even if that couldn't be put in, Barco does provide us with the ability to pass ordinance to enforce any stormwater facilities, so that would be an alternative. So, clearly, the easiest route would be to work with the developer to put that as a condition. I don't think it would be too intrusive, it would help them as well as give us the confidence, but even if that didn't occur, I think we have alternatives to pursue if this stormwater was not maintained 10 years from now, which I think is what I'd prefer to concern. And I think it's important to realize that homeowners association is an entity, it's an entity filed which with the Commonwealth that could be enforced. So, it's not a disconnected group of people that just call themselves homeowners association. So, there actually is a party that can be enforced.
To clarify, can that hope, if it's written into the homeowners association document, are we talking about an agreement among the homeowners or an agreement between the homeowners association and the borough? If we enforce the law against the homeowners, do you join with your sector?
So, a homeowners, what, a homeowners association is a declaration that's filed on the property. And in that declaration, I imagine there could be, which again, you have to flesh out the details, that states that any agreements that are necessary or access for the borough to inspect and maintain stormwater facilities should be granted. That is, I'm not. That, I'm sure, an operation maintenance plan is being undertaken to maintain those stormwater facilities. I'm sure that it is, that those be followed. And if they're not followed, that we can enforce that as well. If this was above an acre of land that was being disturbed, this would all be covered by state requirements that's just under that. So they have a lot less red tape that they have to go through. But I'm sure that we can still work with them to make sure that our fears are taken care of at no real expense or issue with them. So once that declaration is filed against the property, the term of that declaration will control.
When will we see that declaration process?
That usually does not get created until well after, well, until we can make a condition that declaration, when it's created.
It's not that considered?
The declaration is usually done prior to, it's not filed against the property. So when someone buys a unit in that association, they know the rules. And the rules are set forward in the declarations. You recall, this is something that we did with the institutional use buildings in the facade.
Oh, yeah. We're referring tonight, we continue on that.
Well, tonight, really, again, there still needs to be a final level of approval on a final plan. So these conditions aren't in the preliminary plan, but that is something that we can work at the next final plan to put appropriate language in there.
We have two other, there are two other financials, two other approvals. So come just twice more?
Once more.
Once more. So could we ask them for them to present the draft of homeowners association?
I don't think, I'm sure we could ask them to do anything. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Again, this would be a very small line within a broader homeowners association declaration. So I think the proper step would be to agree to the principal rules of the plan that would be included to the satisfaction of most of us.
And I'd just like to speak to a couple of other issues that have been concerns that have come to us from many residents around the borough, particularly about the traffic, increase in traffic that might be associated with adding nine new residents to that site. The planning commission did study carefully and detail the sort of ingress and egress out of the site. And I think they're recommending, and again, this is preliminary, so we'll have an opportunity to see it in the final, final pre-approval. They're recommending that the driveway off of Dudley, off of Conway, be kind of a walk-in, mainly kind of a walking pathway that'll have haulers that can break away in the event of an emergency, if a fire truck needs to access the development. Those haulers will fall down and the fire trucks can go through. But otherwise, it'll just sort of be a walking road. And I think we'll, you know, we'll continue to look at the impact of the traffic on the intersection of Price and Conway, which I know is kind of, can be pretty hairy. I think there's also concern about vegetation and plantings. And I think the planning commission is going to make, you know, they're aware of that and they're going to recommend that, you know, large canopy trees be planted as part of this development. Anything else?
Process question for Dan, if we think we're going to impose that condition of having the long-term stormwater maintenance included in the final approval of the final plan? Do we need to have some reference to that incorporated in this approval of their preliminary?
No, I don't think so. I mean, really, what we're doing here is moving forward with what's on the actual plan. This would be something that would be sort of a condition of solidarity with the plan. To the county, that would be part of the approval. Nothing that would be on the plan would conflict with the ability to maintain. And quite honestly, I'm sure that the plan, the post-destruction stormwater management, PCSM versions of the plan probably already include the requirements to do that.
I mean, it says here, actually, that prior to the recording of the final land development plan, the applicant has to provide all these necessary documents, easements, all of these things have to, the borough engineer has to approve of all these things that are required. We'll be seeing.
So this is just another step forward on clarity of the plan. Everything would be approved, contingent with the borough engineer's letter. So they know, in terms of that letter, what they need to revise and to fix for a final plan. And then we can, in further discussion, with any concerns prior to, well, if the next step is the final plan.
Okay. We'll just vote. All in favor of approving resolution 2016-32, consideration of preliminary subdivision and land development plan for 424 Conway, 31 Price Avenue? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If unanimously, public works, do you have a motion? Trash?
Yeah.
What do you like?
Well, the four of them are in the process. We have, it lives in a very well-documented RFQ. Four responses, five different options for us to decide. But within those options, we've already discussed part of it. And many of those options, obviously, are still open to the full council. But the two key options that we want to address is do we want single stream or non-single stream type of section? Do we want what, how many days of trash and recycling do we want? And so there's options within all the, some of the, I guess I'm trying to get up in the process to, we want to talk about what we want, whether we want to talk about which bid we want. Because I think those two, those two items need to be aligned first. And then we don't have a choice of which ones, choose those two options.
I think we need a motion on the table to have a discussion. So what I would suggest is that you make a motion, making for your reference or maybe something purely random, in which case then we can have on the table and discuss it.
So I'm going to make a motion that our council makes a resolution of what type of trash service and timing of trash service they would like for two thousand, for the next three years, 2017 to 19 contract.
A second.
And we'll start out, we'll begin from the committee. We'd like to see recycling once a week, trash once a week, and single stream. But again, we didn't get much feedback from the public or from other than council. So we're certainly open to discussion about proposed contracts.
I let you know that's exactly what I wanted. I want one trash, one recycling, single stream. I'd love to see pure trucks driving through the borough. I'd love to see recycling every week. I think that'll get people into even better habits of recycling than we have right now, which is good, but I'd like this to approve.
Council members?
My, sorry, my own, one or two questions is, you know, we have that interesting, right now, interesting calendar setup we have, we're constantly checking. And as long as we can address that change, as well as those single stream, I'm thinking I have a quick conversation about it. Those are my only two concerns. And if that gets corrected, I'm.
So single?
Single stream and one day.
One day of each, one day of each side.
So just, I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. Single stream means we're putting our paper, our cardboard, our cans and our bottles all out together in one container.
That is how I understand Sean's answer.
So if I put a cardboard box out with bottles and cans and paper in it, they'll take on their parts. To make sure we're all.
Actually, I'll bring up one other question that was brought up to Sean in the committee would be, what would the impact be on, right now, we get money back for newspaper, mixed paper recycling. We don't know what that impact, cost-wise or dollar-wise, would be. Get more information on that?
We do not know what alternate disposal rates are. We know what our current disposal rates are at Lower Mary Transfer Station.
How much do we get back right now in the tipping fees for newspapers?
Seventy-eight dollars a ton.
And how many tons, I mean, what, like, do we know, like, the monthly or the annual amount? I mean, how much are we talking about?
Now, I want Sean to get that number. Let's just move the discussion.
Sure.
Anyone answer my question?
We're trying to answer your question. We're trying.
You need a chart.
But also, you know, your question about can you put it in a cardboard box? I always think that might depend on whoever we select because some haulers want you to put things in their container. So you might still have to put it in, all in a plastic container, right?
I think the RFQ was pretty concrete that way. The thing is, when you push cardboard out, sometimes there's so much cardboard, it's like, it's not going to go in a container. There's just going to be so much cardboard.
That's true.
That, it's not, yeah, there's just no way. So I think it's important, if we're going to do it once a week, we're going to trash once a week. This is important. Also, I'm aware, just for conversation's sake, that for some of us, having trash collection once a week may change the need for the number of cans we have. I know that I currently will fill one, and then it will overflow towards the Tuesday of the alternate week, trash pickup. And if it's once a week, we may need to add a can. And if you do that for a one, that's a lot of new cans.
I won't need to do that. You've got a lot of single people households in the borough too. So you're not going to need that. I don't even put trash out every week, so.
Just something to think about.
Your question about how much paper waste?
Yes.
Seventy-eight tons of paper.
A year.
Seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight.
I think Bob's accurate.
Yeah, I was going to ask, can we ask?
Just to confirm, there's five?
No, there's too many bidders. I think, let's talk about what's in the RFQ, because that's going to define the service that we get regardless of the hauler that is selected. So if you could reset your question to Mr. Metric.
Do you have the RFQ in your access?
He does. It's in here.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take over.
So the question I made is, will we commit it will go in one container every possible item? I think that's the whole point of saying. Very hard to digest as a.
Test this to you. While you're looking at it, my general comment was, I think we talked about this in committee, having a consistent day every week with trash and a consistent day every week with recycling. Everyone I've talked to is like, get that because I never know what day, like, I'm supposed to take things out.
Consistency is the hot topic of our lives.
And on balance, on balance, I prefer, and I think talking to people around just for convenience, most folks I've talked to prefer single stream. And it might balance things out by increasing the amount of recycling we do. The only open question I have is, you know, are we going to, you know, take a nosedive on tipping fees? Like, we're only looking right now at the hauling contract. And it's, you know, we're getting twenty-one thousand dollars back on paper. Would we get that somehow net back on our tipping fee for the mixed recyclables?
Something we may ask.
Yeah. I don't know if we've gotten a good answer from the county.
Does it make sense to table that till we have a clear answer on this?
I think it might.
It doesn't.
Because.
We get a clear answer though. I thought, Sean, you said it depends on where the trash is taken to, right? And is that totally up to us or is that partly up to the hauler? That's why I get confused.
It can be taken to the Lower Mary Transfer Facility or a facility designated by the borough.
Okay, so it's not the hauler's.
But the Lower Mary Transfer Facility can't handle single stream.
So we just get a quote from the single stream receiver who's within a reasonable distance and confirm that that is the way to go.
Does that concur? Sure. We need to be cautious to make sure that we're not adding additional terms to the bid. Not using people who could not have the ability to bid. So long as this is an objective criteria, that was one of all bidders. That ought to be considered, but if there are considerations where some haulers have different prices than other haulers, council should not consider that.
I think this is.
Because that was not the question.
Right.
This is outside of the hauling bid.
To determine what.
It's determined which option we have. In most, but not all of the bids. The hauling fee for single stream versus separated stream recycling is the same. But we have to make a decision in a void of the contract. Among two things, with hauling, would be the same in either scenario. But the tipping fee might be different, like, some amount, depending on where we actually tell them to haul the trash.
That's, again, that's an objective criteria that's applied to all bidders. That could be done.
Just to circle back on the discussion again. I want to say, like, in principle, I agree with Barbara. Maybe if, like, fewer trucks in the borough, knowing which day of recycling will be and which day the trash will be, all those are really great advantages of this kind of proposal. Yeah, I just want to know that it will work the way we expected it to.
I agree with you. I think to offer the opportunity for the representatives from Mascara, maybe give us some industry insights for the discussion.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Al DeGeneres. I'm deputy general counsel for JP Mascara Sons. I just want to say a few words and defer to Sam Augustine. He's, I've been with the company twenty-five years, Sam's with the company thirty-five years. He really has an expertise and oversees our municipal bidding department. You know, certainly, we were excited about the opportunity to bid here. I understand you're looking at one-time week versus two times a week. I know Sam wants to address that. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about our company. We gave you a letter with a little bit of a background packet. Hopefully, all of you had a chance to see that. You know, we're a local, family-owned and operated business. Started out, you know, typical married success story, one truck operation by the late JP. And the sons have built it up and it's a successful business. But one of the things we pride ourselves on is that although we're able to compete with some of the national public companies, we're based here in Montgomery County. You can still pick up the phone and get in touch with the president of our company. He's available. We represent about eighty to ninety municipalities throughout the eastern part of Pennsylvania. We do business in mainland states. And I do want Sam to talk to you about single stream and about the things we could offer. And I know you're talking about one-time week, but the price per unit per month is like pennies. And I think Sam maybe can address that because there are some benefits to continuing with your current level of least trash collection service. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, for the opportunity. First, we appreciate the opportunity to bid on the borough. You did have a very comprehensive bid with a lot of different, with a lot of different options. In looking at your current system, it was an unusual system. I'll be honest with you, in many years, I've never seen a system where you have two collections one week and one collection the next week. That would be very confusing. Okay, I've seen every other week recycling, I've seen twice a week trash, and I've seen once a week trash. Now, I can address the traffic situations in this borough. I don't live in the borough, but I am familiar with tight boroughs. And I can understand you having issues with your traffic. And you understand that you don't like unnecessary or undue truck traffic. Okay, so that's something that you have to decide on. But I will tell you this, I've reviewed this bid very, very closely. And I believe every comment I'm going to make is correct, but ask me any question you have and if there's any concerns about what I'm saying. But first and foremost, our bid, which I think is most effective for the borough, we're the lowest bid on it, okay? We're not the lowest bid on one time a week. I'll tell you right now, we're not, okay? Your bid for one time a week is eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, okay? That bid gives you fifty-two collections. That's what it gives you for your trash, one time a week. It gives you fifty-two collections of recyclables, okay? And then you have your yard waste, et cetera, with it. But our bid for thirty thousand dollars more, okay, which is only three percent higher than the low bid of one. But our bid for thirty thousand dollars more, okay, which is only three percent higher than, than the low bid of one time a week, what you'll do is you'll receive two times a week collection on a Tuesday and a Friday. Currently, you have Tuesday and Friday, and then you have the alternate where the people, or where you don't have Tuesday, which is odd, and that it's the earliest day in the week to put your trash out, which is usually when you wanna put your trash out. Also, with twice a week collection, the reason I feel for a borough, in my mind, not all boroughs have this, some other boroughs have it in Montgomery County, such as Jenkin Town Borough, is that, yes, indeed, there's a lot of senior citizens that don't have a lot of trash. You had mentioned that you have only a certain amount of containers, et cetera, that you, that you use. And that's, you know, for twice a week, you can put the trash out on one of the days or both of the days. And the advantage of the twice, twice a week is that in the summer, in the summer, there's more waste or garbage that people have that they don't wanna keep inside their houses. That was the original reason for twice a week. And also, too, over holidays and in the summertime and in the springtime, there's more trash that you put out with house cleaning, et cetera, that you would have the opportunity to do that. And remember, you're getting twice the collections, a hundred and four collections versus fifty-two over the one time a week, and you're only paying three percent more. So you're getting twice the collections for three, for three percent more. That three percent, by the way, is forty-seven cents per month per unit, okay? With your twice a week, it's costing you about twelve, twelve dollars, a little over twelve dollars per unit. And with once a week, it's, it's a little less than fifty percent, or forty-seven cents a month less. So I feel that the twice a week collection is, is, you know, obviously, we're the low bid. I think it affords you the best service. And right now, consider that with your residents, you would be, again, only reducing your bill three percent, and you're gonna cut your residents back from the fifty-two, and, and I believe it's fifty-two and... I'm sorry, it's, it's fifty-six collections twice a week and twenty-four collections once a week. So you're getting about, you're getting about eighty collections, you're gonna be cutting back to fifty-two. So you're cutting your residents back about forty percent in their collections, and you're only lowering your cost three percent. Now, so I, I feel it's, it's a strong case to go to twice a week collection. Secondly, I think single stream, if you look at our bid, we bid the single stream a lot lower than our dual stream. The reason we bid it is, is single stream now is, is the way to go with, with recycling. Actually, and I, I don't know your figures, but I do know that you're, you're getting money back on your paper, but you're paying through the nose on your co-mingle now. I believe that's correct. You're paying, I'm not sure what the numbers are, but you're paying through the nose. Our bid, we're taking the single stream directly. We have a, a transfer site in Bridgeport. We build a seventy-five thousand squi- square foot state-of-the-art single stream facility in Berks County, where we're processing five to six hundred tons of single stream. We have, we have the contracts in Plymouth, we have the contract for, they have their own recycling facility, we're taking that material. We have an excellent track record. You'll go probably from about eight pounds, seven to eight pounds of recycling, you will go to twelve, thirteen pounds of recycling per week, per household. So you'll increase your recycling probably thirty, thirty percent for the single stream. You don't have to, you don't have to add new recycling containers. What you can do, we provide stickers at no charge. If you wanna add a thirty-gallon container, we can, we can give the borough stickers. You just affix the recycling stickers to the container. We know it's recycling, and therefore, you'll have extra volume for your recyclables. Our price is all-inclusive for the, for the single stream. Therefore, you don't have any liability for your recyclings anymore. Obviously, you won't get any money for your paper, okay, because they're all included in it. It all has to go through the machine, but nor will you pay any money for your, for your co-mingle. And as you know, the market for recyclables has been depressed over the past six, seven years. So I know that council has looked at this and are looking at going to one time a week. I would just ask you, if you could reconsider, whether it's tonight or the next meeting, take a look at that twice a week. Because there are times, certain times of the year, that there are larger families, garbage that people wanna put out, they really don't have a lot of space to store, store trash in some areas. So please take a look at it, and I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do any council members have specific questions for the... All right. So next steps, we could vote a decision, or we could table? It's your motion, so I'll defer to you.
Is there a motion to table this to...
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Table? Just for the record, it would be our anticipation to be able to make a decision at that caucus meeting? Do you think we could wait until the business meeting?
I would like to do that for two reasons. First, at that point, if you don't have more information, we have the budget.
Yeah, I likely won't be at that meeting, but again, my, my only counsel would be, you can look at tipping fees, you can look at the increased costs or the aluminum plastics, and take that into consideration. But don't entertain any additional sub-bids about what that may be, if it goes to some bidders, just kind of looking at it as a whole.
He told us where these were, and I had no idea, so.
But again, I mean, he, he did bring up the point of paying more for the plastics. I think that Mr. Metrick can look into how much everything for plastics, so I hope it's saving you. Generally.
What would that next meeting be, Mr. President?
Uh, it'd be December seventh at seven-thirty P.M.
Thank you.
Of the course, seven-half?
This is the resolution to, and again, the quotes consideration of the words, so we can talk about that. Resolution, consideration of the words for the contract for the Windsor Avenue Green Street project.
Okay. Is there a second to consider that word? So here's the second here. That's on the table. Bob?
What I'm gonna recommend we do this evening is table this resolution. I think there's more information to be found out about this, and timing is such that I can think well. We've got two bids in, but certainly we're not near our anticipated numbers, so we have to...
By, by not near our anticipated numbers, you mean significantly more than what we were expecting?
Exactly, so I'd rather do the Borough Office time to give us more analysis and decide which way council wants to go forward on this.
You'll take it, Mr. Metrick, because I know there's, there's other money that's connected to this.
Right.
So how does that all work?
Well, I wasn't gonna speak to that, but I will, too. The consulting engineer did a line-by-line analysis of where they hit the mark, where, on their engineering estimate, where they missed. And their conclusion was they, they underestimated the cost of concrete sidewalk implantings. But other line items, the other fifteen or sixteen line items in the budget, they were surprised, can we put it that way? The, the two bids we did get in were so much higher than their engineering estimates. So although we do have a close qualified bidder, the recommendation from the consulting engineer was to rebid the project, we might get better results if we extend the timeline, the, the opportunity for firms to respond to and come up with bid amounts and put together a bid package. We went through a very accelerated bid process here and a very tight construction schedule. It doesn't cost the borough anything more than my time to rebid the project. And we already have the specs put together, so the off, the office doesn't really need to do any more analysis. Our recommendation is to rebid the project and see what we get the second time around. We did that with the Library Terrace project. We might get different results, we might get the same results, which would affirm the first bid process.
Sean, any other, I'm sorry. Sean, any idea why we only received two bids and maybe not four or more? Any, any information or analysis you can give us there?
I don't have additional feedback for you, other than it was an accelerated timeline, it was the fall, and we only had a couple of weeks from when it went out to when it had to be submitted.
You had suggested to move to table?
Like to table before we put it out for rebid on a committee meeting and then bring it up again.
What do you hope to discover at another committee meeting, so I know how to help you out?
I'd like to, um, with the, you know, the Conservancy, to see what their thoughts are, and what you're using to have with it. Think that off, not putting it out right for rebid until we take a look at what aspects might change as far as what's involved. It's about, you know, if it's just a straight rebid, it's definitely not made sense based on the reality of the...
It wasn't underestimated.
I mean, even if we got closer, you know, the, the engineers, they, they stated that there were certain things that we weren't speed on that go off no matter what. Just gonna look at that and decide if this project has the same ability or more flexibility, but especially for anything to push it out.
This is something also that we could, to have a committee meeting scheduled, where we can act on this at the caucus meeting, rather than...
Yeah. Where we can push it, maybe we can, I think, the next, I don't know what the schedule is.
Get their thoughts on, on tabling this to discuss the death, this is just asking about this to rebid.
Well, I'm just thinking about our twenty-seventeen capital items. So if you get, if you get a no ahead of the final budget, at least directionally to the end of the out for twenty-seventeen, and one key input to that is our, is the grant funding.
But that's what I'm...
For extension, that's what I'm...
That's what I'm hoping to do.
So are you planning on extension?
So Charlie, maybe it makes sense that, you know, you take the estimated cost, build in something that you and your committee are comfortable with, you can put it on the capital schedule, if you may not have it.
And then maybe at least, you know...
You can make your decision.
Something like that, maybe, that's honestly great.
I'm gonna take advantage of our expert in the background.
Yeah, sure. Thanks again, and I value everybody's opinion and what you guys do. I do understand that, that it is an expensive project, and I think it is. I, as a contractor, can offer my time to the borough, whether it's through a phone conversation with the engineer, Borough Manager to help provide a few value engineering suggestions before it's put out to rebid. I obviously would have to go out for rebid, but I think there's, there's certain things that engineers don't look at to realize cost of project, constructability. There's, my studies, my own background is in construction with a new interest in permaculture. And I do applaud the borough for their desire to incorporate green design and into their, their infrastructure systems. So I would love to try to have the opportunity to work with the borough in some way, shape, or form, knowing that it's still a public project, it's gonna go out to rebid. I still have the opportunity, I may never get the job. However, to me, to your borough, it's worth my time, even if it's just a half an hour phone conversation. I'll throw out my ideas, so I'll just offer that. I believe Sean has my information, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, it's very much appreciated. Bob?
So I'm gonna table the resolution of the contract for the, and the Windsor Avenue Green Street project.
Is there a second?
I'd like us to...
Discussion about tabling?
I'd like to have discussion, I mean, I'd actually like, I'm just trying to get this in, I'm discussing the motion.
Either way.
Actually, I'm in favor of some kind of hybrid, where we would, we would move to have a rebid, with contingent on the availability of funding through the Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant, which, you know, being administered by Conservancy.
So basically, if the time taken to rebid would make us lose the grant?
Right, right.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should absolutely try to rebid this. If we can value engineer the bid with someone, with our engineer, with, with the help of someone who understands construction, I think we should still try to see if we can make this happen, because we decided to do it. And, and, you know, the only way we can make it happen is to get a bid that, that comes in at cost. And I don't see that, that delaying that rebid process is, is a problem, other than the fact that it depends on funding. So let's make, let's make the rebid contingent on the availability of funding.
Bob, this is your motion, your thoughts on it?
Well, I just, I mean, I, I'm not against, I, I like this project still, I didn't like this project if the cost is more than originally was thought out. So let me be clear, and I just think that because the bids were so much above and beyond, that, you're right, we, you know, do we need to value engineer it? So just to rebid as is-
Right.
-I don't think is the right move currently, unless we look at the value engineering and say, that's not gonna really change anything. I think it would be good to get a little more input. I do not wanna delay it any longer than necessary. I don't wanna move to bid it tonight until we see what that rebid would look like.
With the contingency.
The contingency is that we value engineer it, rebid it.
What's the construction that we'd be trying to hit?
Still April, so the difference of, I mean, we're gonna be meeting again in December seventh, which is only ten. So I would rather, maybe Borough Manager can come up with some different things, bring it up and, you know, put it on our agenda for December seventh. At this point, until we get more information, say, we did, know what we're bidding, until we see what we're...
No, I'm okay with it, if we, if we have it as a motion for the, for the seventh.
All right. So all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is tabled, and we leave it on the agenda for December seventh. Thank you. Seven-G.
Seven-G, a resolution authorized Borough Manager to call from Pico Green, Rio Grande. Public Works.
Is there a second? Tell us more.
Um, this is a, roughly a ten, eleven thousand dollar grant that came to us from the Shade Tree Commission. First, you know, one of the things that we all wanna do is empower one of our committees, commissions, and they are just doing a terrific job on all fronts, and this is one that, it's not significant, it's not a large dollar amount, but it's a good dollar amount, and it's one that, you know, we should be ready for. There is a match, so that if we are awarded this, and we did authorize the process to go through, would be fifty-two hundred dollars, which is already in the Shade Tree proposed budget for next year. So I'd like to see that go through, and Sean, do you have any more detail on that?
All in favor? Or your discussion? You're pacing correctly. Is there, is there a match on this? Yes.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent match, that's what we didn't hear, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. It's already a budget, it's already a budget. But preliminary?
Yes, preliminary.
Any other discussion on this? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any close? Great. Councilor Westport, was there an additional resolution that you were gonna add to the agenda?
Yeah, I was just gonna bring it up under Old Business and ask if we could schedule the motion for, for, for the caucus meeting, if that's okay.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I'm bringing it up under Old Business.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on to eight, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
I would just like to say thank you, thank you, and thank you to all the people who planted trees this last weekend. I don't know the exact number. I know we went down, the Public Works went down to the Navy Yard, picked some, up some barrow root trees, and we got them in the ground. And I heard Jim Spear actually hand up every hole in the borough. Now, I don't know if he did all of them, but I'm gonna give you one very much.
Zon did a couple.
What kinds of trees did we plant? Because that matters, that's, that's part of the work.
And red oaks. There were two, red oaks and maples. I almost got red oaks. Jim did a great job building the hole.
Thank you. Okay. Is that all?
That's all I got.
Mr. Solicitor?
I do have a comment for the last item we discussed, the Green Street project. I did review the agreement that DRA, the contractor, we gave 46,000 for an additional 10,000, which we did, we did, and just hope that the borough manager is aware that some of the tasks following up on these bid documents should be on, that what we paid them to do specifically says that they are to issue an add-on to, as appropriate, to clarify, correct, and change the bid documents, understanding that numerous bids went out, not many came back, it should be on them to contact some of those that did not bid, figure out whether they received it, whether it got violated, and what was in there specifically that could have changed their mind. But I don't think that that should be reported, and that should be on them, because that's what we essentially paid them to do. So I hope that, that maybe you could, you could talk with them about why the results were, and hopefully they can give us some direction prior to the next.
Great, thank you. I do have here the monthly reports, and I would like to add to that report a special report, which is from our Civil Service Commission. Mr. Henderson, do you want to say a few words?
Just that the Civil Service Committee, the council's tasked the Civil Service Commission to establish a list of eligible candidates for police officers for borough and neighborhood, and we started that process in July with the written testing. The process does take time, because we have, we do, do testing, get the results back, and then after we do the written testing, we do oral examinations, and then the candidates go for polygraph backgrounds and physical agility testing, and then all that stuff takes time. With that, I will present the list.
Counselor, tell them...
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Henderson, I appreciate your time and your dedication. Thank you, the committee.
And I, and I believe I speak for the committee that if there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to meet with council as a whole, or the subcommittees.
Yes, our committee meets again December 7th at 6:00, so prior to, I'm sorry, Mike, I'm sorry, prior to, if there's questions, perhaps we could, we can either consolidate some of those questions, or in fact have a representative at the meeting, so thank you.
Just let us know.
Oh, please, let's...
So I was going to say, that applause was rather tepid. I guess I would like to point out that this is another group of volunteers...
Six months.
Operating often out of the public eye, I mean, meetings are, you know, public as needed, but doing a lot of hard work, it's not a lot of fun work, it's very rigorous, the attention to detail is incredibly important, people's careers are at stake, and the impartiality of the process is at stake, and I would like to commend the Civil Service Commission. The members are...
And the leader of this committee is, is Mr. Bill Henderson, and the vice, stand up, Mr. Henderson, please. Behind Mr. Henderson is Jen Pryor, who is the vice president of this committee. There is Mr. Robert Gage, who is a longtime member of this committee, as well as Mike Salmons, who has served as the alternate the first time this year as that position was created. So thank you very much.
We appreciate the services done for the borough, and the Public Safety Committee will follow up.
Yes, we will.
Okay, so I will submit these reports to be available to the public. Any comments for the good of council? I have a shade tree, but...
I'd like to adjust this, my team study, and make sure we're being as proactive as we can to have people come out on Tuesday the 29th. I've been hearing different times, 4 to 8, 5 to 9.
5 to 9.
So it's 5 to 9 PM, it's an open house structure, people should feel free to come in 15 minutes or an hour, two hours, but that's, it is an open house structure. It's not a meeting that we're used to, it's more, you know...
I think it's meant, from our conversation with the consultants, it's meant to be a little workshop-y, I think they're looking for input. So it's a chance for you to come by, you know, meet the consultants, see, maybe, I don't think they have exhibits there, but to talk to them about your concerns, and this is a way that they're trying to have an open house, be convenient for people to walk in as, you know, as they get off work or early in the evening, and come in and really have a two-way conversation, and so they can learn from a wider cross-section of, of the residents than they're able to schedule in, in, you know, time-consuming one-on-one, or, you know, one-on-two interview blocks. They'd like to get a wide range of folks, come in and talk to them, it won't be the last chance for input, and there are other chances for input, but I encourage you not only to take advantage of that, but please help us spread the word, you know, if you've got neighbors or friends, both in the borough, and it would be helpful first to get feedback from folks outside the borough, too, so for those of you who have good links into, into Miras, you know, spread the word, let them come by, too.
Again, these individuals are coming from out of town, they are confident professionals, and they're going to be listening, as consultants do, and they are going to take, and use that information they hear. Because it's a small community, your voice matters, so when you show up, I would expect that you will have some influence into the feedback that they are taking back with them to work on their report, and if you don't, then...
Well, I guess what I'm concerned about is when we spoke to them initially, it sounded like there'd be 12 or 14 stakeholder interviews, and we spoke to them last week, it's more like there's seven or eight, and now we're down to five stakeholder interviews and three of those, I don't know what the schedule is, it'd be great to see that.
It'll be nine, and there's five, five slots ahead of the meeting, and there's opportunities during the open house for stakeholders to get interviewed.
I guess that's what I'm concerned, like, I don't know how much of their team is coming, but if they're looking for feedback, and then they're broken away with stakeholder interviews, one or two things, we're not going to get, you know, now, attention to the general public that comes to this, or the stakeholders that have been designated for during the 5 o'clock to 9 o'clock time, will they get the attention? I'm a little bit concerned how they intend to, maybe they'll break away, and, you know, or are they going to just delve in to the rest of the meeting, to not clear, and spoke to them, if they're going to do that.
I'm going to trust that they, they know how to listen, they know what all the angles are, they know what bounds that they're hearing, and they also know the kinds of stakeholders they hear from in other communities. If they're not hearing from a certain perspective, it doesn't necessarily mean it exists here, but someone can show up to voice that opinion, and that they'll consider all the angles. I mean, that's why we hired this firm, because they really seem to have it together.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking, you know, there's a member of council be on top of it, because I, my impression to date, the interaction you have with them has not been quite as strong as with the initial, when we did hire them, so I would just ask that we be, you know, aware, make sure that we are covering all the angles that you're talking about, there are certain things that were just not at that level that I anticipated and we recommended this group, so hopefully it'll work out, but I would just advise, you know, members of council, be on top of this.
Again, to the community, this is your opportunity to have some input into the process of looking at the cap. So come out and meet with the consultants, meet with some of your council members that will also be in attendance, and offer them your opinion. Thank you.
Uncle Aaron wants you.
Okay, moving on. Number nine, old business, Councilor Westport.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the Building and Zoning Committee, I'd just like to ask that we place on the agenda for the caucus, and I, I realize we're trying to separate resolutions from motions and do them at the business meeting, but I'd ask that we place on the caucus meeting a resolution to engage the Pennsylvania Self-Examine Commissions, they had offered to work with our planning commission, and if we just need to, to just agree that that's, you know, we want to engage with them, there's no cost to us, but I, I forgot to have asked that that be on the agenda for December 7th.
Okay.
To have the agenda for caucus.
For caucus, sure.
Okay, thank you.
You know, they're old business. Any new business, number 10?
Tomorrow night, here at the borough at 7:30, there's a Dickens Fest planning meeting for anyone who wants to volunteer or get involved in any way. Please be here.
Any other new business? Are you on everyone for executive session? I'm looking around the room. Business, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Okay, so with that said, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll settle to adjourn.
No, either way, I'll give it to Counselor Richard, if you want a second.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? All right, thank you very much.